Okay, make sure you guys' phones are on silent. I like the head with the twilight.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. As some of you may notice, we have a few extra folks in the chamber today that are all excited about learning about local government. And so they're gonna, they're gonna all tell their individual stories about that. So sit down and relax for a while. But we are really proud of these men here in this room. They have accomplished a lot this year. They really are setting a standard for football in Iowa and central Iowa that we all ought to try to aspire to. You know, we've had through the years opportunities to congratulate league champions and some state champions and stuff like that. These guys are national champions. I'm gonna quickly dispense with my comment at least for a moment and turn it over to President Henning and ask him to say a few words not only about this team and about this season, maybe you'll have a couple of players want to say a couple of things too, Mr. President, but turn it over to them because really this is their day.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for this opportunity and I'm somewhat humbled to stand here in front of this impressive group of young men because all season long I've been in the stands cheering them along. And the person that should be standing here is their head coach, Coach Mike Woodley. Our entire coaching staff actually is attending the National Convention of Football Coaches in Indianapolis, so they're not able to be here, but I'm really proud that the team is here to receive this honor. This team accomplished so much. They had arguably the toughest schedule in the NAIA this year. We started out with our crosstown rivals, Drake knocked them off, and these gentlemen never looked back for the rest of the season. Went 14-0 by the time we got to the national. As I say, they were week after week, particularly the beginning of the season, they were playing the number two team, the number three ranked team. They were playing teams ranked higher than they were because somehow the people, the people that did those rankings started these guys out at number 19 at the beginning of the season. So these guys really, really just stuck with it. I am so proud of them. And I'm proud of what, not only what they accomplished on the field, but what, how well they represented Grandview University, how well they represented the city of Des Moines and the state of Iowa through this whole campaign, and particularly when we got to Rome, Georgia for the National Championship Week. They did a superb job of representing themselves, our university, and our city of Des Moines. So enough of me, I'm gonna turn this over to one of our captains to maybe say a few words on behalf of the team, and then I think the mayor wants the microphone back for a special proclamation. So I want to introduce one of our team captains and the person that was voted at the end of the championship game, the defensive player of the game, linebacker Jason Gladfelter.
You know, we can't thank you enough for the support and the gratitude and everything that, you know, for recognizing us on this huge achievement that we've accomplished. You know, hopefully this brings a lot of respect, a lot of notoriety, you know, puts us on the map for not only Grandview, but the Des Moines and Iowa as a whole. You know, it's, I mean, it took a lot of hard work and I love my brothers, I love my teammates more than anything, and for it to be recognized as this, you know, I mean, it's huge and I can't, I can't thank you all enough for the support of the community.
We have one of our council members, Bob Mahaffey, is very close to Grandview and I'd like him to say a couple of words.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to be here and congratulate these team players. I sat in the stands many Saturdays watching them play. I'm a graduate of Grandview as our city clerk is also, Diane, and I've had the privilege of serving on the Board of Trustees for 15 years at Grandview. And so I just can't say enough for what we've accomplished, the players' accomplishments, and what this east side has, the improvements they've made over on our east side. So thank you for being here and honoring these, and thank the team for their efforts and the accomplishments they've made. So thank you all.
Bob and I had a few minutes to talk to President Henning last week, and he not only is so proud of these players for the work that they did on the field, but he said off the field, these are first-class citizens as well. He said they go so far as, you know, here they are in the National Championship Game, they've done all their work on the field, they've celebrated, they're ready to go out, they went back in and they cleaned up the locker room. And the guys that were there apparently said, "What are these guys doing back in here?" He said, "No, this is what we do." They came back and they showed their citizenship, they showed their respect for everybody all along the way and showed the respect for the locker room in the last case and showed the kind of people that the Iowans are and the Grandview Vikings are. So let me read our proclamation. Whereas in December 2013, the Grandview University Vikings won the 2013 NAIA Football National Championship 35-23. And whereas the Grandview University Vikings finished the season as the NAIA's only remaining unbeaten team at 14-0. And whereas the 2013 Russell Athletic NAIA Football National Championship Awards were presented to the outstanding offensive player of the game, Derek Fulton, and the outstanding defensive player whom we heard from just a moment ago, Jason Gladfelter. And whereas the Grandview University Vikings not only succeed in athletics, but also academically and in our community as conscientious citizens. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and all of our citizens of the city of Des Moines, who hereby proclaim today, Monday, January 13th, 2014, is Grandview University Vikings Day, and we want to congratulate them and ask all of our citizens to celebrate this team and the accomplishments that these guys have made this year. Let's give them another big.
And we have one small favor to present to the mayor and the members of the council. So go ahead and present that to the mayor.
You know, I was gonna say, I wished I had won one of those at some point in my life where I could have something that said "National Champion" on it. I mean, that is so fabulous. All right. Or you could throw each of them a pass. She's a DB. We're gonna have a couple of swearing-in ceremonies. Good job. Christine, we'll start with you. All right. By the way, as Christine's coming up, we may have to have these guys back. Apparently they're pretty good wrestlers too, so.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Christine Hensley, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Christine Hensley, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the office of Ward III council member in the city of Des Moines, Iowa.
Of the office of Ward III council member in the city of Des Moines, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now and hereafter required by law.
I, Bill Gray, do solemnly swear.
I, Bill Gray, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office.
Discharge all the duties of the office.
Of Ward I council member.
Of Ward I council member.
In the city of Des Moines, Iowa.
In the city of Des Moines, Iowa.
As now or hereafter.
As now or hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
Congratulations.
I'm gonna swear in that council member, Skip Moore. I remember when he first won election, I told him that, "Well, you just gave away four years of your life, so here he is back for another trip." So Skip, congratulations. Repeat after me. I, Skip Moore, do solemnly swear.
I, Skip Moore, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of at-large council member.
Discharge all the duties of the at-large council member.
In the city of Des Moines, as now or hereafter required by law.
The city of Des Moines is now or hereafter required by law.
All right. Skip, you're on.
Powerpoint ready up there. So implosion PowerPoint up there, ready? Probably minimized, did you minimize it? I thought I'd do that, minimize on you now.
That's a good idea. That's what confused me there.
So are you? Here we go. Oh, we did have leftover country.
I have a pound on a different plate from you. You're talking about a different piece.
Let's call to order the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board for January 13th. I'll ask the clerk to please take roll. Here.
Moore. Gray.
Here.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Boss.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
We have a forum.
Item two is approving the 2014 Utility Allowance Schedule, Board Communication Number Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Having none, could we have a motion to approve that utility allowance schedule? It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes unanimously. Could we have a motion to adjourn, please? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? We sit adjourned. We did our swearing-in ceremonies. Today we have a quick message from our own city council member, Bob Mahaffey, and we'd ask those of you, Bob, if you want, we'll all stand up and at this time.
Please join me in a short prayer. We thank you, Lord, for this opportunity together and for the opportunity to serve you. We ask your blessing on this meeting and everyone here in the matters to be discussed. May we act in the wisdom of love and to your glory. We ask your guidance to direct our discussion that will be beneficial to our city and to our residents. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
All right, I want to welcome everybody to our first meeting of 2014. I'm gonna ask, call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to take roll, please.
County.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Moore. Gray. Mahaffey. Hensley.
Here.
Boss.
Here.
We have a forum.
All right. Our item I, under our roll calls, approving a reappointment, first of all, city manager. Should we do these separately or, as you suggest?
They can go together if you'd like.
All right, but I think that I will give everybody sort of a report. We have a personnel subcommittee, but certainly we have a interest in the future of the city of Des Moines. We have reluctantly, quite frankly, I think, not only on the part of the individual, but also the acceptance of which the city council has received, a notice that Richard Clark is going to be moving on and be retiring. In regard to that, our council, and we need to have full council at least participation on this as we move forward, but we have worked together as a, our subcommittee and to begin to develop also with human resources sort of a process to move forward. And I'm gonna quickly sort of outline what we're thinking in regard to that. I think what we're looking to do, first of all, is develop a position profile. It's gonna divide, define the desired skills and abilities that we think not only the city council members, but members of the community think should be possessed by a city manager and those applying for the job. So we're gonna ask assistance of citizens and other key stakeholders in the city to meet with us and/or send in some of your ideas to council members and/or to the city clerk, and we will pull those together as people give us some of their thoughts and ideas on that. The initial evaluation, a review of the applications for the applicable experience and education, I think not only will the city council look through it, but certainly that's going to be headed up by the recruiting firm. We'll need to do background checks and reference checks, and we'll narrow a field down to onsite individuals for interviews. Yeah, onsite interviews, what we have done in the past, we've had panel interviews with key stakeholders, we've had city council interviews, and then we've had a public reception where people can meet and sort of greet these individuals and get sort of a feel for how they react and how they work with the general public as well. We'll have a finalist assessment, we'll get input from the participants. City council will determine, I have a determination of a finalist or one or two, but I would guess that at some moment, we need to narrow it down to a final prospective person that we would offer the job, and we'd have a final vetting with that individual, and then we'll then lay out an offer and employment negotiations with that. Now, there are two items we think that can begin almost immediately. One is a solicitation of bids for an executive search firm and the development of the process for citizen input. And so, I think as a city council and as a personnel committee, we're going to meet and try to vet that process out and finalize it. My purpose here today is to give everybody just sort of an outline of what we feel to be the process moving forward. An executive recruiter will serve as our technical advisor throughout the process, who will be not only our own personnel department and HR director and his staff, but also our executive search firm, to assess the pool of candidates and also set the tone so that this search and let everybody know how critical it is to our future and our planning process as we think about the future of the city of Des Moines. While I believe we have not finalized all the details with Mr. Clark, I think that we are looking at his departure, maybe sometime in June. We think that we're going to hopefully select an interim person in the April timeframe that would work with Mr. Clark to move forward and make sure that the boat stays pointed in the right direction and make sure that the transition is seamless and we continue to supply all of our citizens the support that they need in their businesses and in their neighborhoods and in their homes. And I think that that's the important part, and I know that Rick is really focused on that point, that he has been with the city his whole career and wants that transition to be not noticeable by the average citizen, but also he loves this city. His family continues to, his daughters continue to reside here. He will be back to visit us often, and I know that he wants to make sure that he has a hand in making sure that that transition is smooth and seamless as possible. So, Mr. Coleman, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I do. Just two things really quickly, and this is just for A and A1. The manager, I think, has requested a specific date, and that's May 30th, so I think June 1st is right at the beginning, is over a weekend. And so, I think it's the goal that we would work towards a May 30th final day for Mr. Clark. There'll be lots of time for accolades and thank yous down the road, but I hate talking about it at all without thanking you for your service and your leadership. The communication we have kind of outlines what I think are some of the things that I most admire about your time here at the council. The second thing that I would like to say is that the council, I think generally, is very happy you'll be here till May. That might be a little bit longer than you originally intended, but one of the things that we've done is we've worked on a couple of specific goals that we want Mr. Clark to finish before he's gone. And that is, I think, a positive thing for the city, that it continues the goals that the full council passed in February, with February 11, 2013, not quite a year ago, and kind of wrapping those up and getting those to the finish line is a real key piece of it. Along with that, I'd say, as the mayor pointed out, at some point, we will designate an interim city manager. It's unlikely that we'd hire a new person by May 30th when Rick leaves, but it's really important to me that the staff know and the world knows, our citizens and developers and others, that Rick has the confidence of the council. He's our city manager. We've challenged him to be real specific about what he wants to accomplish so it doesn't feel like a swan song or, you know, a lame duck tenure. Rick has a job to do. We're counting on him, and I know he's going to lead the city well between now and his final day.
Okay. Unless anybody has something else they want to say, I think that on this particular one, we've had a report that I've submitted and Mr. Coleman supplemented, but I think we need a motion to receive and file my report and also approve the process for which we're going to at least begin to walk down that path in regard to selecting a successor.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask that, I support that, that maybe the timeline that you've outlined could be made available on the city webpage, just to answer questions, because there are just a number of questions, and I think it'd help everybody feel or just understand the process so that they can be a part of it.
Perfect. I'll move the action item A, A1, the letter in roll call that goes along with that, and Christine's comment that we create some kind of, you know, short summary for the website so interested parties know what this process is.
Right.
I got it.
Seven yes?
Okay. Item B is the city attorney. One is approving the reorganization plan of the litigation division of the legal department. Two is approving the appointment of Carol J. Mosher as the deputy city attorney for litigation division. And if it's all right with you, Mr. Attorney, we will go ahead and approve the reappointment of the city clerk and the chief deputy city clerk and the chief deputy city attorney, deputy city attorneys, and the assistant city attorneys. All right. So, if we could have a motion to do that?
I'll move. And encourage the public and interested parties to read about the reorganization, and I compliment Mr. Lester for his leadership and management of the department. And I think we all share some excitement that Carol has a more prominent role.
All right. And thank you all for agreeing to serve. Mr. Coleman?
Seven yes?
Roman numeral two is approving a recommendation of myself for the appointment of the mayor pro tem, and for this year, I'm recommending Bob Mahaffey be mayor pro tem for 2014. It's moved?
Excellent.
Seven yes?
All right. Item two, and thank you, Bob, for agreeing to do it.
Well, thank you for the appointment, and I'll do my best to serve.
All right. Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. Could we have a motion?
Move.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Item passes unanimously. Three is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items three through 49. I have a few items that I want to lay out. These are items on the consent agenda that are approved as one vote, unless it is items pulled individually by either a city council member or a member of the audience, we will vote on as one individual motion. Tonight, item 4T, council member Gray wishes to speak, and council member Coleman votes no. Item five, council member Mahaffey wishes to speak. Item six, council member Coleman and Moore vote no. Are there any other items anyone would like to pull from the audience for any clarification or discussion?
I don't need to speak on 46. If there's anybody else, if there's nobody else that wants to speak, we can just conclude it in the consent.
Okeydoke. Let's strike 46.
I'll move.
All right. The ballots have been moved.
Seven yes?
All right. Item 4T. Item four is approving licenses and permits, and T is Nat's Food Mark at 1443 Second Avenue. It's an e-liquor license that has been applied for. Council member Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a real problem with this location. We, on the board of adjustment, when they came to us, I didn't have a good feeling that this was a good place for a liquor store. All the businesses around there, when you put the consent map up, it was a sea of red. Nobody wanted it there, and it went through anyway. I do stop down, a friend of mine owns a restaurant there, and I can see firsthand some of the troubles that are taking place centered around this business. One, we have people being threatened. We've had rocks thrown at vehicles, people urinating on the side of the building. This is not anything that we want to promote in this city. I am kind of surprised that it showed up on the consent agenda. It is something that I think we need to do something. We need to have to have a good analysis of what's going on in that business or get a memorandum of understanding, and maybe I'm speaking out of turn, Jeff, but we have to have some more control by that owner of what's going on around his business. And what exacerbates the problem is the fact that now we got the Burlington Trailways bus stop there. And, you know, we don't, we've got Central City Liquors right across the street already. We have a tavern. We have other places of business there that are selling liquor. There's absolutely no reason that this place needs to, and judging by the clientele that they're bringing in, it's embarrassing for us, and I don't think it's a good thing. And I want to compliment Skip to get the police report. Nineteen trips last year, ranging from disputes, domestics, fraud, intoxication, narcotics, robbery, suspicious people. You know, this is something that I think we need to take a deeper look at rather than vote on it. I'd like to bring the owner in here. I'd like to find out what his plans are.
What we've done in the past, Bill, and you might want to make a motion to this fact, is ask to refer to City Legal to put together a good neighbor agreement, much is what we did on number five, and actually have this conversation and make sure they understand the kind of standards that we want them to meet, and maybe continue this particular item until we get a report back and some suggestions to the...
Thank you. I'm new at this.
Something like that would work?
That will work great for me.
Okay.
So, that's my motion.
Perfect.
Mr. Coleman?
I like this process, and I support it, but I probably won't support the liquor license. I was already prepared to vote no on it. So, I'm with you, Bill.
Thanks, Chris.
Seven yes?
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Item five, consideration Class C liquor license for Johnny Max Bar and Grill of 2779 Hubble Avenue. This item was continued from the December 23, 2013, meeting. Council member Mahaffey.
Thank you, Mayor. We had this at our last meeting, and I had some of the same problems that Bill just had with Nate's, and I referred it to the council, to the staff and to Legal, and I want to thank them for their efforts. We did get an agreement signed with Johnny Max, and we'll be watching them carefully. But with that in effect, I will move item five.
Seven yes?
All right. And on six, I'll vote no also. All right. Takes us to item 34. Item 34 is a master subordination agreement and a stopple certificate for the mixed-use project at 2005 Ingersoll Avenue by Ingersoll Square, Phase III Associates LP, represented by Frank Levy, officer establishing the priority at the city's urban renewal and home mortgages and covenants. Council Communication Number 14-015. Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Just wanted to bring to council's attention that this roll call has been amended because of the complex financing structure that's at play here. It may require additional changes in order to get the financing through. This is a very complex agreement, and the financing has been complex as well. We don't have the financing all quite arranged yet, and we're anticipating that there may be additional problems. So, we've redrafted the roll call to provide for the agreement to be further amended based on the city manager and the legal department determining that there's no materially detrimental impact to the city's interests, and with that, we would recommend the roll call.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You know, thank you for that information, Jeff. This is a significant project and a very important project for us, and I understand the significance of the financial piece, so I'm very comfortable with this and appreciate you calling that to our attention, but I just think that we need to do everything possible to help them get over the hurdle, because I know some of the costs have come in much higher than what they had originally anticipated, so...
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
I'll move item 34.
Seven yes?
Item 39, support for the application by the Des Moines Community Playhouse for a grant under the Vision Iowa Community Attraction and Tourism Program. Council Communication Number 14-002. Mrs. Hensley.
This is a Vision Iowa grant application, and I did not see in the blue letter, unless I missed it, that there was any match required by the city, so I'm assuming, city manager, that this is a result of our conversation that we had up there with them earlier.
I think that's correct. To my knowledge, that is accurate. Matt's nodding his head, so it is accurate. There's no city match required on this.
Very good. I'll move it. Thank you.
Christine, I have one question, and I think is a concern. Having heard from neighborhoods all the way around, the Des Moines Community Playhouse
You know, thank you for that information, Jeff. This is a significant project and very important project for us. And I understand the significance of the financial piece, so I'm very comfortable with this and appreciate you calling that to our attention, but I just think that we need to do everything possible to help them get over the hurdle because I know some of the costs have come in much higher than what they had originally anticipated, so...
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
I'll move item thirty-four.
Seven yes?
Item thirty-nine, support for the application by the Des Moines Community Playhouse for a grant under the Vision Iowa Community Attraction and Tourism Program. Council communication number fourteen dash double oh-two. Mrs. Hensley?
This is a Vision Iowa grant application and I did not see in the blue letter, unless I missed it, that there was any match required by the city. So I'm assuming city manager that this is a result of our conversation that we had up there with them earlier or last year.
I think that's correct. To my knowledge, that is accurate. Matt's nodding his head, so it is accurate. There's no city match required on this.
Very good. I'll move it. Thank you.
Christine, I have one question and I think is a concern. Having heard from neighborhoods all the way around, the Des Moines Community Playhouse that I know that we all support, but the issue is around the digital billboard that's going to be installed there. The school district seems to be concerned about it. It's going to be on twenty-four hours a day, right in front of that school, shining in the windows of Hubble School and also distracting Roosevelt students. And I think it's a huge change there that while we're trying to improve the district, I think we have to be careful what we're doing to the quality of life there. And I'd like to have some sort of a discussion with the Playhouse, how we could help them improve not only the beautiful improvement that they're going to make to that area with the improvements to the Playhouse, but I think it is really a big problem for a lot of folks just by right to allow them to put up a digital billboard across the street from a school in a neighborhood in Abidon twenty-four hours a day.
I understand what you're saying. I believe, though, it's important that we get the information from the staff because I've seen that information based upon what has been agreed to by the Clear Channel. They've given up signs elsewhere in the city to have this sign here. And I don't know that there's anything that legally we can do other than if they were to do it voluntarily, if we were to sit down and have a discussion. I'm looking to city staff and I think that's accurate.
I think we need to look into that issue. I think it's not, other than Forty Second Street, for that one or two blocks right there being commercial area. Everything east of it and west of it and south of it is all either educational or neighborhood residential. And I think that some of the original deals that we made on that, like over here on the east side, when we agreed a digital sign, if they'd take down two, was sort of a spot decision. I really, having heard from so many people on this particular issue, think that we need to think about the best interest and what could possibly be done here. And it's hard for me without something, I mean, maybe this is the leverage we need to try to have a reasonable discussion about where a billboard is going to be digitized and what it does to the community around it.
Let me make the motion to move item thirty-nine with the amendment that we get information from the staff outlining the process and what is agreed to with the current contract we would have with Clear Channel. And then we set up the meeting with the Playhouse to have a discussion of their additional alternatives.
I'd almost like to continue and have that discussion prior to just approving everything.
Is there a timeline on the...
I think the CAT grant is due the fifteenth, so that's two days. Is that correct?
We're applying for the July.
You're applying for the July? Okay, well, then we can have the discussion before we have it come back then.
I appreciate that.
You can take that back. So I'll continue until we have the information from city staff. I know they've put a bunch of information together on this for the neighborhood groups. We'll have the meeting with the Playhouse and then we'll bring it back.
Thank you.
Seven yes?
All right. I think that completes the consent agenda and takes us now to item fifty, which is considerations of ordinances. This one on item fifty is amending chapter one fourteen of the municipal code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows in council communication number fourteen dash double oh-five. A is peak hour parking restriction, seven AM to nine AM, the west side of East Sixth Street, north of Grand Avenue. B is the revision of municipal code to clarify traffic control at the intersection of Thirty-Eight Street and Crocker. C is creating bus loading zone for Central Campus on Grand Avenue, west of Nineteenth Street. Is there anybody here to talk about changes in traffic regulation?
I'll move item fifty, A, B, and C.
I'd like to ask staff a question on fifty A.
And while Jennifer is coming forward, I should probably abstain on A.
Why?
The Des Moines Bicycle Collective is nearby and I'm involved with the collective.
Jennifer, how far north are you planning on this restriction being? All the way to Des Moines Street?
No. Jennifer Bohag, city traffic engineer. Councilman Moore, it'll actually go just to the alley. It's basically that area with the loading zone and the current right turn lane. We're having some backups into the through travel lane, so we need to just make sure we have that open in the AM hours.
First set of meters there, there's cars that are parked early. Then you have to wait in traffic to get into that turning lane.
Correct.
And so you're going to attempt to correct that.
Correct.
So it's about a half a block then?
Correct, yes.
What is it, a couple of meters?
Yes, a couple of meters and a loading zone.
I think it's three, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so my motion is to move fifty, A, B, and C. Do we, I guess I'm looking at this and I know just B and C, it would be nice to waive the second and third readings. Are you comfortable with that? Or A? Okay. I'll include A then as well.
Six yes, one abstain.
All right. Item fifty-one, council requests from councilmember Bill Gray to discuss concerns regarding the intersection of Hickman Road and Merle Hay Road. Councilmember Gray?
This is an intersection I drive three to four times a day. What precipitated this is the fact that we got a CVS pharmacy going in on the northeast corner there. And this intersection's been neglected for all thirty-seven years that I've lived on the west side. The medians are crumbling right into the pavement. The sign, the dividing signs laying flat on its back on Merle Hay Road. It's a five-way intersection, one of the strangest things we've ever had. But all my thirty-seven years over in this side of town, it's never been addressed and we, I think we missed a boat in an opportunity to work with CVS and put some turning lanes in there, put some good controlled traffic lights. So that's the reason I want to take a look at this. I'd like to have, and thanks to the city manager, to get an intersection feasibility study started because we've got an opportunity here to do something right. This is a federal highway intersection, a state highway intersection, as well as the gateway from the western side to coming into Des Moines. And we have not done ourselves any favors by leaving it the way that it is. And I'd like to recognize if I have Jason Polium, he's the president of the Merle Hay Neighborhood Association. He's worked with me on this in the past and I'd like to have him speak on this issue as well.
Mayor and councilmembers, Jason Polium, twenty-one thirteen Fifty Second Street. I'd like to thank Councilman Gray for raising this issue. It's definitely important. As Bill well knows, this is an intersection and its current state is a frequent topic of conversation in our part of town. So I think the sooner we work on addressing some of the needs there, both in terms of function and fashion, I think we'll be well-served by those efforts. So certainly supportive of the idea.
Thanks, Joyce.
Thanks.
Anybody else? All right. So we're going to refer to city planning and the manager's office to...
Yes. Receive and file?
Receive, file, and refer.
Thank you. Receive, file, and refer.
Seven yes?
Item fifty-two, from councilmember Carl Voss, to speak regarding an ordinance amendment that would require establishments that play or have live music to keep their doors closed.
As some of you know, there have been some issues in the east village regarding establishment that have either live music or jukeboxes playing into the evening with their door open. I would ask that the staff receive, hold on, let me get this right here. This is my first time up with this. Receive, file, and refer to staff to look at an ordinance requiring restaurants and bars to have their door closed. In particular, they could do this, I believe, at nine o'clock is when minors need to leave a bar. And so it could be after nine PM. It would be great if the staff could work on this within the next meeting so that as warm weather approaches, we're all queued up and have this in line. I believe Omaha and other communities have an ordinance like this.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Mr. Voss, we'd be happy to look at this. It is an issue that seems clear-cut on the surface, but might be fairly complicated if you think about doors and then you have windows that create openings and maybe there's different nuances in terms of time of operation or what's going on. But we will in fact look at it. My information is that you're correct. There are some other cities that have similar kinds of ordinances out there. What we're going to want to do is look at all of those, work with our police department and our planning department and see if we can come back to you with some definitive recommendations. We'll do our best to get this back in two weeks, but that's quite a little bit of research to accomplish in a short time. So we'll do our best to get it back in two weeks, but it might take just a bit longer. But we'll be happy to look at all of it and report back with our thoughts and recommendations.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is an issue that's really been on a slow boil for a long time. And it seems like it's not just these villages. There's other bars around town where this pops up. And I think that the bar owners have the best intents, but with the turnover employees, the new ones come in like to prop the doors open. And I think if we could have an ordinance says you can't prop them open, you can't have them open after this time, it'd solve the issue. Sorry.
Seven yes?
All right. It's five oh-five. We're going to go to the hearings. First hearing item is item fifty-four. It's items regarding property at fourteen fourteen Fremont Street. University Group LLC has amendment to the Des Moines twenty-twenty Community Character Land Use Plan to revise the existing future land designation from public, semi-public to commercial, auto-oriented, community commercial. B, a hearing on the request to rezone the property from R one sixty, one-family, low-density residential to limited C two, general retail and highway-oriented commercial to allow the redevelopment as a commercial center. C is the first consideration in the ordinance above. And D is the final consideration in the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. All right. Is there anybody here? Is the applicant here to present? You want to say anything? You want to make a, that's what you're going to do, or...
Yeah.
My name's Jeff Spence. I'm a member of the University Group LLC. And our plan, submit this for...
Maybe somebody can pop in over here.
Okay. Currently fourteen fourteen is owned by Des Moines Public Schools. And we are working with them to rezone the property. There's another property at fourteen thirty-six Fremont that we're looking to switch with them to get more commercial viable space, a lot currently. One 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 East Fourteenth, there's about twenty thousand square feet. We're looking at rezoning fourteen fourteen Fremont, another six thousand square feet, to make more viable option in the future for a commercial retail building there. So we're asking just to rezone that fourteen fourteen to commercial for more land to build a better-purposed retail building there.
Have you identified what type of retail, a convenience store or what's...
No, we have not. There are restrictions in our agreement to rezone that. No liquor stores, no money. There's quite an extensive, the list that's in that rezoning.
You're right across the Nemetsite and right close to East High. You're right close to those two schools.
Right.
And I was surprised to see this because the last time I talked to the school district, I thought they were looking to buying that all to make it all part of their facilities.
Yeah, they didn't have any interest in buying eleven eleven East Fourteenth. That was a site that was, is currently owned by a company...
Former oil gas station.
Yeah, and there's, I don't know if there's environmental issues right now on it, but it's a drawn-out process in regards to due diligence of it. And I don't think they're prepared to buy it. Fourteen thirty-six Fremont, there's an old building, a house there that they would like. So we are working with them, buying that, and working with them on fourteen fourteen too to kind of switch them out.
So you're looking at, you're looking at a trade then?
Yes. Yep.
Because I know that a lot of tailgating goes on over here during football season
in that area.
Yeah, our intentions are to make it a first A-class type of retail development there. We'd like to do a strip center with needs that meet the communities.
How large of a building are you talking about putting up there?
We're looking at roughly that one we have, there is about fifty-five hundred square feet. It could be more or less, I suppose. It depends on the type of user that would go in there. I mean, a lot of the time, the fast food or quick-serve restaurants need more parking, so it could be smaller. It just depends on the tenant mix that we were able to put in the building. Of course, you know, the bigger, the better for in regards to lease rates and so...
You mean, does somebody take the whole thing? Or are you looking for four bays in there?
Preferably four bays, so...
Okay. Those two structures to the east of there, are those both residential?
Yes, those are currently both residential. In the rezoning too, there's a section in there that does address the current land owner. I think it's fourteen sixteen Fremont that his driveway would stay.
I think you got one of those, the vacant lot, and the next one is a house on that, it looked like.
The vacant lot, we currently show the retail center over it, fourteen fourteen. And then fourteen sixteen is, it's an abandoned house. And then the other one, I think, is being tenanted right now.
Sure improves the area to get both those houses out of there, I know.
That's the plan. I mean, we've approached the gentleman at fourteen sixteen, kind of working with Bill over at Des Moines Public Schools and putting a plan together to kind of get those two... Because eventually, Des Moines Public Schools would like to redevelop and do some community center, I've heard, to some more tennis courts to... And I know eventually, I think that they would like to limit access on Fremont too, is my understanding, what I've heard also. So...
Okay.
Jeff, did you hold the meeting with the two required neighborhoods and the property owners within two hundred and fifty feet?
Yes.
And the results of that meeting?
The only person that showed up was a gentleman from fourteen sixteen Fremont. The neighborhood associations, everybody was on board, nobody showed up, and I haven't heard anything from anybody else.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
All right. Anybody else? Let's close the hearing. Counsel, any comments on fifty-four, A, B, C, or D?
Is it restricted? One of the restrictions, Mike, not to put in a used car lot, are they going to be able to do that if they choose?
I talked to Mike today on that. That's all. Go ahead, Mike. Here, the overlay on the...
I think condition number one was related to extension of the vehicle display lot overlay onto this property, so no car lots without, coming back to the council and having that lifted.
Thank you.
In what we're doing tonight, there's always the availability to amend a site plan, right? Are we doing just zoning tonight?
I think we're doing zoning.
Okay.
Are we going to see a site plan back? No.
This is not... This is not...
Site plan will be administrative review by staff under this proposed...
But like, for instance, I noticed there wasn't like a design where you could have a drive-through. If he had a tenant that wanted a drive-through, he could still submit a site plan. We're not tied to exactly what's here.
Correct. They have just their normal site plan requirements.
Okay.
I would move 54A, B, and C and not D. Give the, I'd like to talk to the neighborhoods a little bit.
Okay. Seven, yes?
All right. On the application from Diversity Insurance to rezone 1533 and 1541 East Grand Avenue from C2, general retail and highway-oriented commercial to limited NPC, neighborhood pedestrian commercial. A is the first consideration in the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration in the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the applicant and requires six votes. Is there anybody here to speak to item 55 at 1533 and 1541 East Grand?
Carl?
Carl?
Well, I'd like to have some discussion on this. The applicant is required to provide us with a summary of the meeting with Capitol East. Anybody who owns property within 250 feet, and they're not here giving us that summary.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Michael Ludwig, planning administrator. This item was before you about a month and a half ago. The zoning was approved on the property, but the zoning conditions were omitted from the ordinance. So this is actually just a correction of a previous hearing that you held. And there were no issues, I recall, with the previous zoning. So it was just...
Okay, so the neighborhood previously had approved this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Move the motion then.
You're moving 55A and B?
I am.
Okay.
Seven, yes?
All right, let's note that the hearings are completed at 5:15. Take us back to item 52I from councilmember Christine Hensley to discuss charges for water hookups for developing property in Des Moines.
Thank you, Mayor. I received some calls from developers, developers' council, indicating that they felt there had been a change in policy with Water Works regarding hookups for particularly multifamily development projects throughout the city. And so what I would like to do is, because it's adding some pretty significant additional costs, and it appears, I understand there's two sides to every story, but it just seems like we have to have some discussion with the city of Des Moines and our community development with Water Works and not have the developers in the middle of this process. So I'd refer it back to the city manager's office with the intent that we conduct meetings with Water Works and community development and developers to see if we can't work through that. The most significant concern I have would be the additional cost on some of the larger projects. They're indicating it could be as much as $100,000 in addition to the damage that it would do to the streets by the requirement that they have so many individual hookups that they have to actually go out to like Grand Avenue or some of the major streets, which obviously is a problem. And so if we could look into that and work with the impacted parties, I would appreciate it. And if we could do that, it's time-sensitive just because of construction and getting things ready for this, the next 60 days, it would be great if we could get resolution.
Mrs. Hensley, if you could pass on to me the names of the people that you've talked to or others that have experienced it, that would be helpful.
I will do that, thank you.
Okay.
Moving on to communications reports. Item 53 is from the city of Clive requesting to terminate their participation in the Homeland Security 28E agreement. I will, just for clarification, this is a sort of a longstanding agreement that I believe we originally had 17 members that filed on to, or signed on to it. There are certainly budgeting issues, not only for the city of Clive, but certainly the city of Des Moines. And we had committed to this for the best interest, we felt at the time, of our citizens. And the city of Clive, I think, their agreement actually is to terminate, or at least will expire if they don't re-up it in June, end of June, I think, of 2015. So this letter is to request their termination at this time. So hopefully that clarifies sort of what the issue is. Mrs. Hensley?
Thank you. I know there's been a lot of discussion around the homeland security issue, and I'm going to make the motion to deny the request. And the reason being is, we have a contract with them, and I think it's important that they honor the contract. I know, as I said, that there's been a lot of discussion. I think we need to put this behind us, and they need to honor the contract that they have. I have talked with the mayor of Clive, and I think he is fully anticipating that the contract would not be, or this request would not be approved and that it would be turned down. But I think it's extremely important that as we look at other collaboration, and I know from talking with the mayor of Clive, he wanted to make sure that people understood that there's still support for collaboration and that we're all, that they're very interested in continuing to work. This situation is somewhat unique in that I feel we were asked to take the direction because of, at the state's request, and there were some changes at the state that have contributed to this. So not going into additional detail, I just would make the motion that we deny the request of Clive and move forward.
Anybody in the audience have any comments regarding the request of Clive to terminate their participation in Homeland Security?
And their contract is June 30th of 2015?
Correct. They've got one more year from this June.
Actually, 18 months from now.
A yes vote means we don't terminate it, or a no vote means?
A yes vote means...
A yes vote means you don't terminate it.
Okay.
I think with the contract in effect, I think they ought to live out their contract.
I totally concur with it, and I find it interesting that the mayor of Clive feels as though we're not a neighboring city.
Well, and I can tell you, in the real world, you know, in my business, if you want to break a contract early, that's fine. Your penalty is the remaining portion of the contract. And that only makes sense. You know, we build staffing levels on anticipated revenues coming in, and this is just a real-world look at what should be done.
Staffing and equipment.
All right. Councilmember Moore.
Seven, yes?
The one comment I'd make is that this isn't just about the city of Des Moines. It's about the other partners that remain in there too. It takes money away from the coalition that they join, not really from the city of Des Moines. It takes money away from this effort that serves many cities, and they're harming all cities that are left in coalition.
All right. It takes us to item 56, which is approving a review of the zoning board of adjustment decision granting a use variance to allow property at 6220 Grand Avenue to be used as an amusement, entertainment, enterprise, business. The roll call contains alternative motions, choose A, B, or C, below council communication number 14-016. A is, the city council remands the decision in the order of the zoning board of adjustment for further study. The effective date of the board's decision will be deferred for 30 days from the date of this remand. B is the city council takes no action to review the decision in order. The decision of the board will become final on January 19th of 2014. Or C, the city council declines to remand the decision of the zoning board of adjustment. The decision of the board becomes final on this date. Anybody in the audience wants to make comment? Seeing none?
I'll move item 56, and my option will be C, so it's effective immediately.
It was one of the last things we decided when I was on the board of adjustments, so I agree with you.
Good. Seven, yes?
Item 57 is a demolition permit for implosion for Iowa Methodist Medical Center School of Nursing at 1220 Pleasant Street, council communication number 14-010. Is there anyone in the audience to speak to this?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. My name is Sherry Stewart. My address is 5912 Vista Drive, West Des Moines. I am in here representing Unity Point Health, Des Moines. And in this particular case, it's the Iowa Methodist Medical Center campus. I'm the executive director of properties and facilities development. Along with me, I have brought some of our experts. Kristen Moore, and Kristen is with the engineering department with us in construction at Iowa Methodist and Lutheran Blank in West Des Moines. Amy Fetters is with GTG Construction. If they do talk, then they'll give you addresses. We have Dave Zinzer with DW Zinzer Demolition, and Kyle Fisher, also with DW Zinzer. Wanted to make sure that they were here to answer any of your questions. Tonight, what I'd like to visit with you about is the implosion of the school of nursing. I don't know if any of you have been, have driven by Iowa Methodist, but the school of nursing is right across the street from the main part of the hospital, Northeast Edition is what we call it, the North Edition. So this is on Pleasant Street. And actually, I'd like to correct, the real address is 1117 Pleasant, and I think it's different in the drawing.
Is it down towards the east end, near the emergency entrance?
That's correct.
Thank you.
This might help. The school of nursing has been closed for 10 to 15 years as a functioning school of nursing. We have utilized it over those years for many different offices and different storage and office use. It's been decided that we need to be looking at some expansion possibilities for the emergency department. And we, so it's potential that we will need this space for that purpose, or it is just a premium space on campus. So if it isn't the emergency department, it would be or could be something else, even if that is green space down the road. We have not designed anything of the ED, so not able to talk about that part of the project. To give you some semblance of this, yes, it's on the east side of campus, across the street from the main hospital. Thank you. Can you see that? When she's doing the red drawing, we're helping people in the audience, but we're not, I don't think, helping you, are we?
You're okay.
We can see it.
We can see it, we're fine.
Can you see it? Okay. We've already submitted for a demolition permit, and we have been demolishing. Our first thing before we did any demolition is the abatement of all of the asbestos and anything else that has, or dismaterials within the building. That has been completed. We had a third-party group that did the monitoring of all of the abatement, and we now have clearance that all has been concluded. Now we are demolishing the area in red. That is our first phase, and we're going to be using the traditional method of demolition for this part of the project. And a lot of it is already done, if you've ever driven by on the side between the daycare center and the school. A lot of work has already occurred. We were going to be doing the same type of demolition with Phase Two originally. But it came to our attention by DW Zinzer that there were a lot of advantages to us to think about implosion. So that's how we came into it, just, well, tell us about it, we will think about it. Obviously, with a hospital right across the street, it was not something that was, that we needed to be, have the proof in front of us to make that kind of decision. As we found out, we believe that we are going to be doing a process that is much safer than doing the normal, traditional type of demo of the two top stories. Those are both, the blue are two different buildings. One is older than the other, and that is the area that we're thinking about imploding. When we implode, it would go into the area that's red now. That's the direction it would be. The debris pile will be in the area that is marked up there as red, so that's Phase Let's see. We, as I said, we did do all of the abatement already. The second phase is going to be... Go ahead. I'll go into the reasons that we decided after we were talked into doing this. And now we have a full support from our administration and our construction department. This is absolutely the way to go. The reduced dust duration, it could be two months that we would have dust doing the traditional method, but with this method, we can get that down to a hour or 15-minute period instead. Noise duration, again, we have critical care patients right across the street. They would have two months' worth of noise that they would have to contend with, but with this, it would be an eight-second amount of noise, and then the building is down. So that was also important, especially for critical care patients. The dust and the infection control that we need to provide for that, the noise with intensive care patients, extremely important. Reduces additional HVAC air filters. We would be changing those constantly, which is still something we will be doing as we're hauling away the debris, but it would be less. The concentrated cleanup, we can do that very quickly, within 15 minutes, the doors will be open. We will go on diversion for our emergency department for 15 minutes, but after that, we'll be up in operation for the ED. We're going to be, as I said, reducing the risk associated with dust control. The other thing is that because of the water that we would use, if we were doing the old traditional method, we would have hoses that are going to be up in the air, they're spraying the debris as they do the demolition, so the dust is kept to a minimum. If we're doing this in the wintertime, we can have frozen water lines, just as our fire department had recently. Or we can also have water that goes... Is that correct? I think I read that. And then we can also have water go on the sidewalks, on the pavements, and then again, have another serious risk for family members and people, staff members that are walking in that area. So that's important as well. Are there any, can I ask for...
What's the timeline? When do you plan on doing this?
March 16th at 7:00 AM in the morning. That is a Sunday. Traffic is really low. Our ED traffic is low. We have contacted, I will go over that now, because we wanted to make sure that we were good neighbors in regards to this. So we have made contact with... Sherman Hill?
Well, just to...
Sherman Hill, I have left messages.
You've got a church across the street.
Yes.
What's going to be their situation in...
Reverend Gray, I've spoken with him, and I am going to be making a presentation if you approve of this project. But he understands that they do not have any early morning services. So 8:30 is about as early as any of their people start coming in. And then they have Sunday school at 9:15, and their only one service is at 10:30. So he did not see that that was any issue, because we will have everything cleaned up in a one-hour period, so by 8:00, we will be cleaned up. So we even have a half hour that is flex time.
So what's the other communication you're doing with the neighborhood associations?
So I have contacted Homes of Oak Ridge.
Could we maybe, Chief, to Kip, have you reviewed this? Okay, could you come up, go ahead and finish what you were going to say, and I'd like to have the chief's quick overview of the process. He kind of reviews stuff like this for us.
We did make a presentation to your city staff, and the police department had quite a large representation as well as... a large representation, as well as the fire department. We will be asking them for assistance that morning. They will be paid. So, I'm just trying to, we're trying to get cost estimates on that right now.
Okay. All right, Chief?
So, that's part of it.
I think what we're concerned about is whether or not you have any concerns and whether or not all your concerns have been addressed.
John Tekip, Chief of the Fire Department. If it helps make the issue a little more concise, I feel good. Our Fire Marshal, Jonathan Lund, reported to me about the briefings that they have had. Actually, Des Moines Bomb Squad is probably the largest player. Their concerns have been addressed. We'll have staff standing by at the, at the moment that they do the implosion, and according to the plan, we feel good about what they, we present. I don't have any questions about it.
Okay. No, ask the counsel, anything?
Two things. Can we get some information on the qualifications of the contractor that would do it?
Yes.
Is that all right?
Chief, I assume that you've already done all this, and police has done this, right?
No.
Yes.
So, you...
I can't rattle off, I can't rattle off what that is. But that was the process of...
These kinds of questions have been addressed.
Right.
Okay. You know, I'm very comfortable. I appreciate the detail and the information that you've gone through to give us that. I think just the, I'm happy to move item 57 to go forward, but I think the communication with all the surrounding, just making sure that people are aware of the time and have a chance to get questions answered, such as what you've provided here and to our police and fire.
Yes, all of the neighbors have been notified.
Okay. Neighborhood associations as well.
Neighborhood associations, Sherman Hill. I did not contact the Des Moines, downtown Des Moines Association with that way of occurring.
Very good.
For our motion, could we confirm the address is not 1220, it's 1117, is it not?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so 1117 Pleasant Street?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify, on your first screen, it said December 2014. So, you've actually taken down part of the, you've started, so it's probably December 2013, I would guess. Is that correct?
It's on the first page.
Maybe, is that your handout, or I'm not sure of that date?
Yes, that should say December 14.
Okay, so that's already...
2014.
Okay.
The one-story and two-story.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The other, the other thing in terms of communication is you'll have a lot of interested parties, and you probably need to be specific on where people can go and not go, and how the council can get in the front row.
That has begun.
I thought you meant on the building going down. We'd all, I'll make that amendment.
They can see it on the screens if they have it in front. This is showing you the area that is the no zone very quickly, that we have to keep everybody out of.
Okay.
That we just put on the screen.
Good. Mr. Coleman, Mr. Mahappy?
Yes, yes. Very cool.
Seven, yes?
All right. Implosion.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one extra item. These are items that are filed after 5:00 p.m. on Wednesday in preceding the council meeting, and we have added this item on. It's one item, approval of the contract with Century Link, Glenn F. Post, President for the purchase, installation, and maintenance of Entrado Viper Call Routing System, and I sponsored this item, Council Communication Number 14-Z17. Are there any questions by staff or anyone else? If not, could we have a motion to...
Move extra item one.
Seven, yes?
All right, could we have a motion to adjourn our first 14 meeting?
So moved.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We said adjourn. Thank you all for attending.
Go, Cyclones.